Thank you. All right. We'll start off with the one forty-one housing report on a street that's been taken off the agenda, correct? So that's out. Police appointments, number forty-two, Chief Brown.
Thank you. So I'm before you tonight to request the appointment of two police officers. This is more a formality at this point as these two officers will be or are scheduled to attend the Municipal Police Training Committee Academy in Linfield beginning on July seventeenth. And as part of that process, they will need letters of appointment from the town administrator. The first name to come before you will be Cody Davison. Cody is a Burlington resident and graduated Burlington High School, class of two thousand eighteen. He's also a graduate of UMass Lowell, graduating in two thousand twenty-two with a degree in criminal justice. He is currently employed as a test proctor in the Burlington, I'm sorry, in the Belmont School System. He also has some police experience. He was employed as a seasonal reserve police officer in Agunkwit, Maine from June through October of two thousand twenty-two. And he also has past experience with the town of Burlington, working with the Recreation Department as a temporary maintenance worker over a few summer periods. I would respectfully request the appointment of Cody Davison to the position of police officer within the Burlington Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the chief's recommendation and on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, who wishes to appoint Cody Davison to the position of police officer and ask the board to waive their fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Opposed? Four zero zero.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the second person is Byron Lara. Byron is a resident of Dudley, Massachusetts. He graduated high school in the Dominican Republic in two thousand eight. He's also working towards his associate's degree at Quinn Sigeman Community College. He currently works at his family's convenience store in Worcester where he serves as the general manager. He's been working in the family business since two thousand ten and he's leaving to pursue his interest in law enforcement. Both of these candidates were both highly recommended out of the testing process and they've gone through the vetting process beginning this past December and again will be starting the academy on July seventeenth. Respectfully request the appointment of Byron Lara to the position of police officer with the Burlington Police Department.
Chairman, with the chief's recommendation and on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, who wishes to appoint Byron Lara to the position of police officer and ask the board to waive their fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Against? Four zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get the one forty-three, a firefighter, chief.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm asking for the appointment of Lieutenant James Sorensen to a limited assignment firefighter. I'm gonna get this right one of these times. Lieutenant Sorensen will be retiring July fourteenth. And upon his retirement, he wants to stay connected with the department and limited assignment firefighters can do details when we don't have enough available guys to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, the administration wishes to congratulate Mr. Sorensen and thank him for as many years of service to the town. And with the chief's recommendation and on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, who wishes to appoint Mr. Sorensen, James Sorensen, to the position of limited assignment firefighter and ask the board to waive their fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second. So moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Against? Four zero zero in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we're talking for an update. One forty-four, flood maps.
Good evening, gentlemen. So I think I've been here before to discuss this, but so FEMA is in the process of updating the flood maps for Burlington. It'll be the first significant change since about nineteen eighty-seven on the flood maps. We have had updated maps periodically, but in this case, the maps will actually significantly change. The floodplain areas are going to be different than what we've had since nineteen eighty-seven. So up there, there's just a couple of examples. On the left is the new map and on the right is the old map. So you can see the shapes are a little different. They're actually much more accurate. They've got, they used better topography information using LiDAR. They also studied the streams, you know, using their equations and whatnot. So we're currently, the Chair of the Board got a letter, I think on June eighth, maybe, initiating a thirty-day review period for the town to review these maps. The letter says the purpose of the review is really to look for mistakes on names and places and stuff like that. So town names, street names, names of brooks and rivers. They're not asking us at this point to review the technical floodplain. I don't think we're actually, there's anybody probably in the town qualified to. The USGS is doing this, doing these maps for FEMA. But so we're about a little more than halfway through this thirty-day review period. After that, they're going to initiate a public session, which they'll advertise in the newspaper and whatnot. Hopefully, it'll be in Burlington, but they're doing it for a bunch of different communities. So it's possible they would have it in some neighboring community. And at that point, they really need to start getting out word to people because this is going to affect property owners in Burlington. There are people who have properties that are not currently in the floodplain and they're going to be in the floodplain. There may be some people who are currently paying flood insurance and they may no longer need to pay flood insurance. And even municipal properties are affected. If you go to the next slide down, the Vine Brook Water Treatment Plant is currently in an area that's considered the five-hundred-year floodplain. On the new maps, it'll be the one-hundred-year floodplain, which will significantly affect what you can potentially do on that property. So that's the update. So like I say, we're just, we're in a period where we're just looking for mistakes on the maps. But then after that, there'll be a public review period. The town would have a chance to appeal it if it had any significant information that the maps were wrong. But that's all coming down the road after they schedule their public meeting.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, what's the procedure for a homeowner getting notified if their, their status changes, whether out of the floodplain or in a flood?
So that's a good question. I would imagine that's what FEMA will be telling us when they have this public meeting. They gave us these maps and basically said, these aren't really for public distribution. They're for, you know, your internal staff and whatnot to review. Yet, these maps are accessible to anybody who wants to, who can, knows how to find them on the FEMA webpage. So they're not top secret, but we're not supposed to be like, starting the panic yet until they actually start their public review process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not this time. Mr. Denizio?
Yep, I, I think the idea was just for Mr. Keely to come and update the board and just to see how the process is going.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
This is a time factor here. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the drone for the police department. A little bit out of order right now. Gentlemen, if you come on up, take a look at that.
Good evening.
Evening. Thank you.
Sergeant Abasco in Burlington Police. With me is Detective Sage Costa and we're before the board today to request assistance in acquiring a new drone. A little bit about our drone unit. It started back in two thousand seventeen with the initial drone that we had purchased was one that was a reasonable cost at the time to see if it was a program that we could get up and running. Since two thousand seventeen, we've become the regional leaders in drone flight for public safety missions. We've flown various types of missions, including search and rescue missions for the elderly, for children. We've flown for fire departments, looking for hotspots. We've flown for the water department, inspecting the water towers. We've flown various types of missions and it's been, it's been an eye-opener and it's something that we're, we're proud to be the leader in, in the area. That being said, we're kind of NASCAR drivers driving junkyard cars, right? So our drone, as with any type of technology, is outdated. The technology is actually failing on us. The thermal imaging on our drone is all but useless at this point. The RF signal on the drone continues to lose connectivity with the drone itself, which could cause issues as far as a potential flyaway of a drone. A flyaway means that the drone will just literally do that, fly away. And in Hanscom Air Force space, Hanscom Air Force base airspace, that is obviously a consideration. And there's no encrypted data transmission with the drone that we currently fly for the majority of our missions. Biggest hindrance with our drone is weather. Living in the northeast, we're, we're, I guess blessed with, you know, snow, rain, high wind and anything else in between, right? So the drone that we currently fly is unable to be flown in any type of precipitous weather at all whatsoever. High winds are also an issue and it accounts for about fifty percent of the time that we can't fly. So that's fifty percent of the time that we're unable to fly emissions that, that we would otherwise be useful for. The battery life on our drone is about twenty-nine minutes for optimal conditions. It obviously diminishes with the type of weather we're flying in. And to put it bluntly, they don't really make the batteries or the chargers for the batteries for the drone that we're flying anymore. So obviously a consideration going forward with this, with this particular program. Regarding the drone that we're flying now, the overall components, we require four components for it to be operational, being the aircraft, the controller, the Wi-Fi station and an iPad. So if any one of those components fails or isn't charged or isn't updated, we're not flying, right? So we can kind of see the trend here. We have a, we have a unit that's capable of so much, but we're being hindered by the equipment that we currently have. I'll show you a case in point. In February, we had a call for a missing female. And during that female, there was an overnight search for her. The thermal imaging, again, on our drone, which would have been what we would have used for nighttime operations is not functional. So we believe that had it been functioning at the time, we could have potentially been searching in that area where she was eventually located. If it was a daytime search, we would have used zoom function, but we only have a four-time zoom on the drone that we're currently flying. It's, I don't want to say it's useless because it does something, but it's not optimal for, for the type of missions that we're flying. You know, overall, the drone that we're currently flying is, is, you know, like I said before, belongs in a junkyard and we're NASCAR drivers, right? We, we should, we should be flying something that we're capable of flying. That being said, we had done some research on a host of particular drones that would satisfy what we're looking for and we decided on a DJI M thirty-T, T for thermal. Detective Costa will fill you in on what this drone can do outside of what the drone that we currently have can do.
Specific to the, the M thirty-T and why we really like that drone, that stands out more than the other ones. DJI is a leading standard on police and law enforcement drones in the area. They're big on everything. You'll see them as an industry leader, but they are one of the industry leaders for law enforcement. Mainly, it's what it's gonna be able to do is allow us to fly in all types of weather, high winds, extreme cold to extreme heat. And that's one of the major things that we need and what, what the community would need. With that, heavy rain, snow, we wouldn't be limited on how and when we can fly. Nighttime operations with the thermal and the IR, not to get into my nerd talk, but you're talking four K resolution like on a TV. Right now, like your iPhone zooming faster will be able to do sixteen optical zoom, crystal clear thermal, be able to zoom with the thermal. And I know that these don't sound like little things, but that it's a major game changer when we're flying in the air. Another thing along with that is flight time. The longer we are in the air, the safer, you know, the police and the community are. And the system allows for a smoother transition for battery changes, quicker battery recharge because, again, the technology has gotten us there. Along with that, a new controller with the drone paired together, we're talking a seamless operation, will be up and flying within five minutes compared to maybe a ten-minute, fifteen minutes in time is, on this sort of stuff matters. So all that together, it does have new upgrades with encryption, faster data transfer. That means video coming back to a command post or even to the pilots. No frequency, latency, everything will be crystal clear. And one of the, the big things is we'll have a new system with a laser range finder. If you're in the middle of the woods, it's hard to get units or hard to get other drones or hard to get resources in the middle of the woods if that's where we are. We have plenty of places in this town that we could be. But we'll be able to give exact, real-time information from the drone to the pilot, to the units with, you know, just a click of a button. We're unable to do that now and a new drone would just be able to allow so many more systems to come into our unit and I think we'll be able to fly a lot more missions at the top level that we know we can fly at.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what brings us here today is back in February when it was windy and cold and we had a resident go missing. I later, unfortunately, it wasn't a good outcome and we lost a resident. And I inquired later, did we use the drone? And it was found out that because it's so old and it's so outdated, that it doesn't fly in the cold and windy weather where we had a resident missing in cold and windy weather. And I thought that was awful that we really had something we couldn't use. As the sergeant and detective stated, there's so much more, many uses that this drone we can use. I know from a tactical standpoint, now the police don't have to get a physical body to look into a window on a dangerous situation. They can fly the drone to the window or up, you know, higher than a ladder will go. So there's so many, so much, so many positives by updating this and getting the new drone that'll be beneficial for the town, the police officers and the residents. So that's what brought us here today is that sad fact that we could not fly it back and forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you. Super helpful. I had the chance to check out the website that DJI has. So cool, right? Like, just like in two words, like this drone is incredible, what it can do. And I was, you know, when I looked at the, the price tag, I was like, oh, that's it? That's, that's not bad at all for what I can do, right? It's pretty incredible. So just a couple of quick questions. I know our first drone was in seventeen and it obviously reaches its end of life pretty quickly, but it was a lower-end drone in terms of the spectrum of drones that kind of exist. How long do we think roughly this one might last for? And then, well, let me start there. How long do we think that we could probably have this one up and running without seeing fault?
Being a more advanced drone, it's, it's hard to tell because drones are fairly new, right? And there's really no, there's really nothing out there that tells us how long these things last, right? I think we got some good time out of the one that we're using for the amount that we've flown it. It's been flown quite a bit, right? And I anticipate that's what's gonna happen with this next drone, right? We try to get, we try to keep flying it as long as we can. I mean, we're, we're not gonna get rid of the old drone that we have now. We'll fly that in more, I guess, risky environments, you know, in, you know, environments where there's magnetic interference and there might be an issue with the connectivity to the drone. So we'll keep that for riskier environments. We certainly plan on babying this drone, right? We don't wanna, we wanna keep it for as long as we can because it's going to allow us to complete the missions that are, that are brought forth upon us. So it's hard to give you an exact length of time and I don't really, I would just be guesstimating if I did that. I can tell you that one of the bigger issues with the drone we're flying now is they're simply stopping, they're not making the replacement parts for it anymore, right? So as long as there's replacement parts made and it's, and it's more feasible to, if we ever have to repair it or maintain it, then we'll continue to do that. And at the point that that's not feasible anymore, I would imagine that technology is so far advanced at that point that, that I would wanna go to something else.
Sure. Two more quick questions. I know it's got an onboard SD card and I know that it's giving you feedback from the drone to the device, to your laptop, wherever. Is it, can you record from where you're at? Like, can you capture live information for a recording or is it only off the SD card that's onboard?
So I'll let you.
There's multiple ways you could do it. If you wanna, you can, yes, you can record to answer that question. And how we have it now is we save our flights to our, basically our cloud system. So our flights are a flight log, that's how it logs. We don't have, we don't usually record our missions just because of privacy issues. But if there's something that we do take a photo of, it will store it to either an internal SD card, an outside SD card that's removable. And we're able to download that onto a desktop or anything like that. So, but in most of our flight records will be saved to a cloud-based system.
I mean, this is a good question. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I'm, I'm open to having this be a part of the operating budget. I think this is just a, a piece of equipment that you need to do your jobs and it should just be rolled in at some point and you shouldn't have to even come before us to acquire, especially for a price point like this where it makes, it makes plenty of sense. But chief, we can figure that one out. I don't wanna.
Sort of like a flying cruiser?
Yeah, I mean, look at, you know, we have all, the, the VPDs, all kinds of gear that they need to do their jobs as effectively as humanly possible. This is one of those things now in today's day and age, there's no reason why it shouldn't just be a part of the operating budget. Get them what they need.
And we look at it, we look at it as an important tool that I think sometimes people forget that we have, right? I mean, it's, it's, you know, you go out to Los Angeles, they have four helicopters flying around the city at all times, just wasting gas, you know? And here we are. We've certainly made strides from where we've come. We've, we've been able to figure some things out and to get deployed a little more quicker. We keep the drones in the command post now so that all we have to do is jump in the command post. Thank God we have that because it keeps all the batteries charged. And we jump in the command post now, roll out with it and that's what we use as our base of operation at the current, at the current time. And that's what we want to continue to do. We have a plan on, on how we want to expand the operation and it's all baby steps, right? So this is one of the bigger of those baby steps, right? This, I think, is gonna be the, the more, I guess, cost, cost cumbersome component of it. So if we can get over this hurdle and we can, we can acquire this drone, I think that's gonna solve ninety percent of our mission needs.
Awesome. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Burlington is so lucky to have such a professional and, you know, outstanding police force. And I always say it all the time, but anything we can do to help make your jobs, you know, easier or make you more effective, I'm all for. And I just think the, the time that we'd save, I mean, every time there's a missing child, like my heart breaks and if we could, if this drone could, I mean, make us more effective finding a child at night or in weather, then I'm all, I mean, it's a no-brainer, right? Or to get into a yard where there might be a perpetrator and you can get the drone over to get a nice visual without putting any of our guys at risk. It just seems like an absolute no-brainer and thank you for the work and I'm in full support. I think it's great.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Couple of questions or a couple of comments, whatever you wanna say. The one we have up there now, it takes ten to fifteen minutes to get it going before you can even put it up there?
That's if, that's if everything's updated on the software.
That's about the only reason I need to hear, we need a new drone. Because every minute wasted is a minute lost, right?
Absolutely.
We've got a kid out there, adult out there, if somebody's missing somewhere along the way, that's all I need to know, that one there. So the second question I have is, how many officers are capable of flying this?
We have four officers at the moment. We have five and, and.
Does that cover almost every shift? The way the shifts work and officers work?
At the moment, no, because we're still, you know, we wanna make sure we get quality people to fly these drones. As you can see, they're, they're, they cost some money, right? So we wanna make sure that people have their heart set into it, right? So we do put it out, we have, we have put a job listing out. We did pick the best candidates from that job listing.
No, no, I just, I just wanna, I'm just trying to find in my head, like, so if it's a, if it's a shift at ten o'clock and there's no one there to run the drone, can we, can one of the guys be called in at that point? If it's a missing child, if it's something that's really, you know?
So we've been very fortunate where we have done that, right? We've had officers come in and it's, I don't even think it's a, it's a no-brainer for us, right?
We go back to the time, the time effort, right? We go back to like, let's go, let's get this, let's get this child found or this is a bell phone, whatever it is. The only other comment I have, a friend of mine runs the state police drones out of his barracks and the things that they do with those things are absolutely incredible and I can't see us doing any different than that. So this is without question a plus. I guess my last comment would be, were you throwing something out there about a helicopter or was that just like?
I mean, if the board is willing to entertain the.
I know we have an officer that does a question of Husback riding and I'm waiting, I'm waiting for that to come at the reservoir. So I didn't know if somebody had their license and wanted to be flying around Burlington.
That would be between the board and the chief to discuss the potential.
Doesn't need to be big. You have a nice new helipad at Layton, too. There we go.
There we go, we're all set.
But anyway, first a boat, now a helicopter. I didn't know if that's what it was going. I mean, new police station, helicopter, what's the difference?
The jet plane's gonna be a little bit out of the way.
But anyway, well, I definitely support this article. I don't think there's one of us up here that doesn't understand the severity of having something like this on our police department and the guys that run it will be top-notch without question, the way the whole operations run up there at the station. So at this point, I'll. Oh, Mr. Denizio wants to speak.
Just a couple of points before was to Nick's point about finding the funding source for it. Since this got put on the agenda, Chief Brown has done exactly that. And, and we'll be able to purchase a drone from his budget. And the reason we didn't take it off is because we always wanna come and be able to talk about the program. As someone that sits in on interviews for new candidates, I can tell you every single one of them when they come in and what they say why Burlington, they talk about all the different departments that we have and great things we do and every single one of them mentions is the drone program. I think those guys are, are doing a great job. But I don't think there's any need to take an approval. This will be purchased from.
All right. Just a, just a great update.
All right.
Excellent. Awesome. Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. We're going back to citizens' time, I believe, right?
Yep.
Okay. Now, we're gonna open this up for citizens' time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Saying there's only two people here, I'm thinking that's a no. Is there anybody online that would like to speak on citizens' time? Patricia, I see you sitting there. Nothing tonight? Nope, no one else? Okay. All right.
Got off easy tonight, didn't you?
Uh, let's do the call center community study report. Final report. Presentation. Yes.
Just to introduce, next step in the process that started a while ago through an initiative through member priest, actually, and we wanna thank the Budget Procurement Office, who you may remember, Whitney was able to secure a grant for us to fund this. Some time ago and for her and Sam Hockenberry is here with us tonight for them shepherding us through this process. And now Karen, Sam Fields is here to go over a quick presentation for the board. I don't know if Mr. Priest has anything to add.
I'll just, you know, I mean, I think that the time is better used if Karen was talking and not me. I will probably ask questions and add color after the fact. So Karen, the floor is yours.
We look forward to that. Thank you, everyone. It's, I'm delighted to be here in person and to actually meet the folks that we've been working with on this project. I am a member of the team. As it would always happen, now that we're getting back in person, our team has been splintered tonight with multiple in-person meetings. So they extend their hellos. As, as was just outlined, the contract, the town contracted with the Call and Center in June of two thousand twenty-two to conduct a two-phase analysis. The first phase was completed in February of twenty-three, which provided a thorough assessment of what you do now, what your current tools are and how you are reaching constituents and the community. Phase two, built on that assessment, to determine ways to improve those existing communications and create a plan that will serve as a roadmap going forward. Before you now is the project team's recommended communications plan for the town. Note that you do have the digital version in your backup packet. It is actually a more useful tool because there are hyperlinks in there that will give you more resources and examples and things like that. But I'm old school and I, I like the paper as well. So with the Chair's permission, I would like to just go through a quick presentation. It is a communications plan, so I will try to be brief and concise because that's sort of what we're going for. If we could go to slide one, please? Thank you. Um, how we did this. So um, I think everyone in this room is aware that we spent a great deal of time talking to most of your department heads. We also talked to community leaders, um, B C A, and um, we tried to hold a focus group with the seniors because they're the group that is pretty tough to reach in any community and two, two participated. But it was useful. Um, and we talked to some nonprofits. Um, what's striking is we conducted a community survey, um, and I want to just shout out, Sam was super helpful throughout this whole process and making sure that we could talk to the folks we needed to, to do the research we needed to do. So thank you for that. Extraordinary that seven hundred and forty-seven responses came through. Um, that is a really good number. It's, it's not scientific in that it self-selects because it's folks that will do things online for the most part. Um, but it does give a very good flavor of what the community wanted. Um, upon completion of that research, the team used the data and the information learned about your town's specific strengths and weaknesses and included um, four major goals in the plan before you. Uh, next slide, please? So the overriding message on, on the plan is um, to elevate communications as a core priority. And your board has already taken a huge step by commissioning this study. And the project team identified through our research that there are, there are a number of internal structural issues that impede the improvement of your town's communication. And to address these, the plan recommends um, that you create an internal position that is responsible for coordinating all aspects of communication uh, throughout the town. And this person would be able to implement the detailed plans in, in the, or the detailed steps in the plan, um, which will both improve constituent and internal communications efforts. You'll see when you get into the weeds of the plan that there's a lot of, as you, as anybody who works in municipal knows, I mean, when you want to start an initiative, there's, there's a lot of heavy lifting. And um, it's great to make it a priority, but somebody's got to put the, the, the rubber to the road to do that. And that's why that position is recommended. In addition to that, many of the departments already do a great job with communicating to um, constituents and the public. But what there isn't is consistency between the departments, um, and not all departments see the function as a priority. So that's sort of a cultural and structural issue that came up. Um, the plan um, identifies the need to put the internal person in place and then ask each department to, to, uh, and, and most of them have them now. Say, this is our communications person from X department and form um, a supportive communication team within the um, community. Internal person can coordinate that effort, but that gives you sort of the internal structure that's lacking right now. Um, this will make sure that each department has support and the guidance, and that's a big piece. Um, importantly, um, throughout the plan, you'll see the providing training and resources. Um, and you'll see that as a theme. If you want to improve how someone in one department is communicating something, they need to know what tools are available and what's effective for them. And that will require some training. So as you go forward in implementing the plan, those are, that's the sort of thing an internal person can help identify, what are the resources you're going to need to bring in to make sure that people are properly trained? And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Uh, next slide, please? So goal two is, is uh, the effectiveness of town communications. And this is really the nuts and bolts of the implementation. Um, this is, I, when we go to towns and we have these conversations, a lot of them, a lot of people will want to just say, well, what do we do now? And that's sort of what goal two will talk about. It'll talk, we, we talked about the assessment, during, in the assessment about improvements to the website that um, that could be brought to bear. The details are in this plan of things that you could take as concrete steps to m- m- improve the site that you have. There are also um, I'm sorry, I lost my place here, including, um, okay. And one of the things that um, oh, and part of that whole, the theme on that as well is also the consistency. So if somebody comes to your website and they go to a page, they know where to find contact information. They know it's, that, that's one of those real fundamental things that can really improve the resident experience for the website. And I, we've talked with Mr. Priest about this quite a bit, is one of the problems that most communities are having is the death of the local newspaper and, and that sort of thing. And that's making a lot of communities scramble to figure out, you can't just call the local reporter and say, hey, can you put a paper in? And so um, one of the things we're recommending is that Burlington, through the new uh, position, start creating a municipal newsletter uh, that can provide reliable information all in one place. Um, all of these elements are all tied together. A newsletter can be facilitated if you've got a communications team in place without it being this big, heavy lift for the community. It's like, what do you have, what do you have, you, what do you have? And then somebody puts it all together and it becomes the newsletter. The plan also highlights the need to engage and partner with community groups um, to reach the most constituents. Uh, you have diverse populations, they have folks they rely and trust, and if they can partner with the town, you will increase your reach of information instead of just putting on the website or just sending out a newsletter. Communication data and research, last piece, well, second last piece, is um, showing right now that video content is ve- very effective in imparting information. And one of the benefits of having a communications professional dedicated to town is they can create that content. But even more importantly, um, having somebody in that role is able to assess and evaluate the impact. So you make, you make some videos, you do a newsletter, do these things, and that's the last piece, is measuring and tracking the success. Communications moves fast, your audience will change as the community changes, and it's really important to put in place those key performance indicators to make sure that you're not getting stale, that what you're doing is actually accomplishing the goals you want to do. And that's another reason that it, as a core priority, you should be able to measure those things. Um, slide three, please, or next slide? The goal, the third goal is to solidify internal communications. Um, one thing that our team heard over and over again is that um, when it comes to communications, most of the departments in Burlington work, um, do their work, um, and communications very much in silos. And they do their own thing, and that's fine, but this has various degrees of success and does not promote um, what we would say is a town-wide unified voice. So you might be having messaging from one department that sounds, looks, and feels very different than another department, and that can, can be confusing to residents because it's a branding issue. Won't go into the weeds, that's what the, the department, the, the plan's for. Um, but the plan recommends that in order to break down those silos and improve communication efforts, the department heads need to have more opportunities to come together and share communications priorities. Not a, not a heavy lift as well, but it's a structural thing that we, we talked about from the onset. Uh, we recommend that the communications manager work to establish consistent content and engagement policies so that all departments are clear about what they should be doing in this work. And that is something that we heard um, throughout the town, that, you know, sometimes some departments are, are, are valiantly trying to get stuff out there and they feel like they're just throwing stuff at the wall and they don't know if anyone's listening, if it's making a difference, and they don't know if they're um, posting appropriately or they're, you know, what do they do if somebody comments? And that sort of stuff, which is, is important for the town to have a consistent voice on that. And again, that's back to the training, you know? Once those sorts of policies and recommendations are approved by your board, then it's really important that folks are, are properly trained so that they feel empowered and um, you know, can, can do the work on your behalf. Uh, next slide? Goal four, the last goal in the plan, is to improve resident engagement. Uh, the gold standard is always two-way communication. You guys probably know that more than anyone. Um, their phones ringing and town issues. Where's my four? Uh, the research team learned that um, mostly through the survey, that folks really do want to get certain information. And they um, they, depending on what it is, there are mem- um, a lot of tools that they can be one-offs depending on, on the importance of the issue. So public forums, project-specific videos, as I said, even surveys to get the impact, what you might need if it's a major project. I mean, I'm sure you can think of things around town that um, are going to impact folks. And um, thinking proactively about new ways to engage them when these things come up really um, furthers the trust and the engagement with residents. Um, and the last, last bullet, anticipating community inquiries. This is, this is built into and baked into having the communications team and the department heads communicating more regularly, is if Department A knows that there's going to be, you know, public works on, on three streets, then, and, and other department know that that happens, what happens is, we've found is folks will call whoever they're familiar with and say, hey, what's going on? And if, if you can anticipate what those questions are going to be, just in the normal course of the work, um, you can get ahead of some of that and, and, and also build community confidence when they call and somebody picks up the phone and they say, hey, you know, why don't I have water pressure? And they can look at a fact sheet and say, oh, we're sorry, there was a water main break, instead of saying, go call the water department. That, that, that frees up time within the um, within your departments because people aren't answering the same question over and over. And it does build that confidence because people feel like, oh, they know what's going on there. Um, so that's the last sort of structural thing that we've recommended in the plan. Uh, next slide, please? So in summary, um, we really, you know, you guys, this was a really fun project and we really enjoyed working. You have great folks that work in your departments. Um, I think that you'll find when you, when you dig through the plan itself, that um, uh, the struct- creating some of the, of the structural corrections will go a long way to smoothing those out. Then there's the heavy lift of actually writing policies and updating the website and, in the dirt. And that's why we recommend somebody internally. So in, in summary, we would like uh, to recommend that you create an office of communication and community engagement, or whatever you want to call it, but that's what is the standard. Um, improve the interdepartmental sharing, develop tools, create policies and procedures to support the staff, and proactively manage information for residents. And the last one is, I'll just reiterate once again, is making sure that you put in systems to measure and monitor how this works. Because um, without that, you, you, you will be, what some of the departments are feeling right now is they're not sure if what they're doing is actually reaching folks. And so that last piece will allow that. So I think I did that in under five. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions. I know there's a lot of information in here, um, but I do want to, again, thank you for this opportunity to work with the town. It's, it's been um, it's been a pleasure and very interesting, and I hope this will help you guys move forward on this plan.
Joe. Like you're throwing me a bone? Oh, I'll let Nick take this first one.
Actually, I was.
First off, uh, Karen, I want to thank you and the entire team at the Collin Center for all of your time and effort in this project. Um, obviously, we couldn't have done it without you, and I really appreciate how, you know, you and the team took this as, you know, your own, right? This, this, to me, in working with, with you and the rest of the team, it didn't feel as though this was, oh, just another thing that you're doing, right? Like you really dug in and gave it, you know, um, a lot of hard work and effort, and I appreciate that. Uh, special thanks to Sam because, you know, he has been uh, shanghaied into this uh, and has been nothing but a, but a trooper uh, the entire, the entire time, and I really appreciate it. Uh, so Sam, thank you, truly. Um, you know, I think that, you know, having, having been very close to the project, you know, as, as we've gone and having the opportunity to read through the, the final report, I want to draw just a couple of quick parallels to what we did about five years ago when we decided to uh, engage in economic development director position, right? I think that there are things that we know that we know, things that we know that we don't know, and things that we don't know that we don't know, right? And I think that, like, we knew, at least at the time, that we didn't know enough about economic development, but we knew that we needed it, right? And so we went ahead and we requisited the position and we asked for, for the position to be created through, through town meeting, and they agreed with that, you know, assessment. And here we are, five years later, with Melissa doing incredible things, right? To, you know, bring uh, more economic development, to bring unity. She's brought in a lot of dollars as a subsequent side effect of all of that, and done a lot of really interesting and amazing things, not just for the businesses, but for the community, right? And I, you know, it, it's funny that, you know, video, you know, creation, content creation was something that was brought up, right? Because that's something Melissa's currently working on, right? And something that she's uniquely identified is this notion that when a business comes to the town to become a member of the community here, uh, that's when they're looking at all the things that we have. That's when they're, they're looking at our systems the most, right? When people relocate here, that's what they're doing. They're going to the website, they're looking at the resources that are easily accessible for them. And that's a really interesting gateway point to start capturing people in terms of a newsletter or B C A or whatever it might be, right? And I think every day that we don't have that consistency that you referred to, Karen, is a day lost when new residents come to town and don't know where to look, right? Uh, and that only, only further propagates the, the, the problem of people not knowing where to turn, who to talk to, frustrations rising, extra effort on staff, right? And, and, and then it becomes systemic. So, you know, I think that whenever we talk about a new position, our brains automatically go to a director-level role. Uh, I don't think that that is how we should be thinking about this. And uh, you know, I, I think that as a board, like, again, Karen, I really appreciate that in here, you know, the, the to-do list, as it were, is broken into near-term, medium and long-term kind of goals and outputs, and that makes a lot of sense, right? It's like, here are the things that we should be doing first and that are probably easier to tackle, the low-hanging fruit, and then we kind of work our way into the larger, the larger stream, as it were, right? You know, I think that at our next meeting, we should have another discussion about this after we've all had a chance to digest everything and consider what our next steps for this, you know, should be. Um, you know, I mean, the fact that we had nearly eight hundred people submit to this process as a part of the townwide survey is fantastic. Uh, you know, we're always complaining that people don't engage. Here, here they are. Here, I mean, it's, you know, out of the seventeen thousand registered voters, it's not necessarily a, you know, a proper cross-section, but it's more than we typically get when we put surveys out, right? We're typically like two, three hundred people. This is well above that. So um, a lot to consider, you know? I love the notion of engaging with community, uh, you know, uh, groups, community organizations as collaborative touchpoints for where people already are, right? And finding people. Um, you know, I think that this is a great first step into what we can be doing. And again, just thank you very much.
A pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, this is an amazing report. It really is, so easy to follow, laid out well, I mean, it gets you from point A to point B without anything in, in the way. Uh, just want to make sure, I understand one thing you said was, you said some departments have their internal person and some don't?
Yes, so we, uh, I, I meant to look up the number. I think we talked to, I want to say nineteen departments, if you remember? It was a lot. For a few ti- more than, uh, more than a few times, the department head would say, you need to talk to this person because they take care of our social media. You need to talk to this person because they write our, whatever, you know, whatever, our newsletter, whatever it is. So we conducted secondary um, um, interviews with the folks that were actually doing the quote-unquote communications for that department. Um, and, you know, some departments are just knocking it out of the park and some are just, you know, screaming into the void. But.
So as a follow-up, did we have any departments that had no one or they just said?
Yes. Um, that's, I, I, that was one thing that we saw, with there, there are some departments that either don't have a lot of for, like, front, um, public-facing requirements, that there are more people come-to-them kinds of things, which is a whole conversation that a communication director would have, right? Um, that are flat out, and they are not thinking about posting on social media because it's not core to what they do. You know, obviously, the library and the police and fire, they have lots of content that they want to get out to the public. So there were some departments that are like, yeah, well, sometimes we'll, you know, we'll throw that on the website or whatever, but it's not, it's not their core, they're not[1769.68] But it's not, it's not their core, they're not thinking about it.
So until we can get this up and running, which we know is going to take some time, John, I don't know if you can answer this, but is there any way we can reach out to those departments and see if they could start being a little proactive and find someone that can be that go-to person for communications?
So I, Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim. So I think on, to some degree, we have departments that are crushing it on social media, the rec department, library that we mentioned, police. And those are probably the most important. So we're ahead of the game there. I think we're talking a little bit about departments that don't have the need to be as forward-facing, but still, we still want to have consistency. And we talk a lot about the branding and how to make strides with that. So I think it's, I think it's something that's, in the near term, in the near term, will get someone on board to be doing the, just the consistency stuff throughout all departments. But as far as, you know, having someone dedicated to it, it might not be necessary for certain departments. That's really what it is. The important ones, you see that way?
I was just trying to get the ball rolling before the ball gets rolling, so to speak. Just a couple more. I love the idea of the municipal newsletter, I assume electronic, but I love that idea because it's just sitting here, I can think of so many events, news stories, it can be shared. I mean, certain departments are still going to have their own newsletter, like Council on Aging, because it's, you know, department-specific, but I could just think of how, you said newspapers are faded, well, maybe this is our version of a newspaper, so to speak, but I love that idea. Nick, to your point, I also see this as beneficial to businesses. Instead of having to call this department, that department, email this department, this might be like one conduit. They reach out to one person, and this person can say, "Okay, you know, do this, this, and go to see this person, this office," or whatever it may be. Just, it streamlines everything so that the businesses aren't calling the wrong departments. They call one person, find out what's the proper way, and they do it. So I think that might be beneficial to businesses who are thinking of locating here. And one final question is, how many other towns have communications directors, or are there any other towns?
I was actually afraid you'd ask that question because the Collins Center has been, we've been trying to inventory. It's a very fast-moving need because of the change in the communications industry with a lack of local. So I know that my colleagues are actually calling town by town by town to get an accurate count. I don't know that number right now. It's increasing. Every six months, there's another pool because every town is addressing this. So I have to get back to that one, but it's one we're actively researching right now.
Is because if we are going to look at getting a communications director or director of communications, let's see what other towns have
Right.
as a blueprint, so to speak, and maybe get a bunch of towns and say, "Oh, this will work for us, this won't work for us," and find two in Burlington. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can actually help you ask that question if I may. So in my own, you know, personal research, anecdotally speaking, most cities have one, right? So Craigham, Arlington, Boston, obviously, the bigger ones. Lexington just hired, I think, a year or two ago. They called it a, like, a public information officer, right? So like, it's the degree to which people are kind of categorizing this role or these roles is kind of quite large. But, you know, I mean, Lexington just did it, I think it was two years ago, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's definitely happening in towns more our size, as opposed to just like the Boston's of the municipality or the Commonwealth.
That's actually one of the reasons why getting that number is a little tricky, because every town calls it something. Sometimes it's the assistant town administrator has been given those responsibilities. So that's what we're trying to ferret out as well.
Maybe we could do that here. I'm only kidding.
Did not recommend that, Justin.
I'm also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Karen, thank you for all the work you've done on this. This is a great report, very interesting and helpful, and thank you, Sam, for all the work you did. I had one question, and Selectmen Takeus took my question about how common it is for a municipality to have a communications director. And I wonder if other towns maybe tie in, maybe a PR element into some of that, into their front-facing communication to potential homebuyers or businesses or anyone who really wants to learn more about your town?
That has been the model for a lot of towns in the past, when there was a robust local news network, was that, you know, especially police departments and town administrators would have external PR firms to turn to in a crisis or, you know, news releases, that sort of thing. But the world's different now. People aren't, you know, there aren't newspapers to pick up, and a lot of people are getting their information from social media and that sort of thing. And so in our work, we've really focused on, you can, you absolutely should think about what resources you can use to support somebody internally, but the internal person knows what you need to get out. And you still, even if you were to try to outsource the whole thing, you would have to have somebody coordinating those efforts as well. So there's a lot of ways to slice it, but in the current environment, it's hard to wrangle that because not all the PR firms are going to be as adept at all the tools. And you can see all the, there's a million, because there's so many different ways people are getting information now, it's not, the one newsletter's not going to do it, you know. And you said about the digital newsletter, you're still going to need to have some printed out for certain populations. One thing I did have on the slide and I forgot to mention was, you know, being really mindful about translation and other adaptations that people need for accommodations. Those are the sorts of things that, it's a little hard to outsource that because you've got to know what your community needs very, very specifically.
Yeah. And a lot of the changes we see in this field with newspapers folding and stuff, it's just the speed in which we receive our information and the speed of our society now. I mean, everyone wants everything now, now, now. You know, if someone doesn't answer a text message within, you know, half an hour, you're wondering what's going on. And I wonder also if these communication directors are also maybe social media directors for the town that get, that kind of gets wound into that whole package of how they distribute their information through, you know, the various forms of social media along with the newsletter. Because there's just so, it's evolving so fast that that's probably a good reason for us to kind of take a good look at it like we have and improve our communication methods.
Yeah, it is, it, this plan, as I said, as we said, this is a living document. It has to be, you know, it's the roadmap. It's, you know, if you start today and try to implement everything, I guarantee you, in the middle, you're going to have to pivot somewhere because something will change. But, you know, you look, you know, the police department does a phenomenal job with their social media. It's like, you wouldn't want to put bumpers on them, and you wouldn't want to take that away from them because they know how to get those messages out, and they know how they're reaching folks. But are, you know, are you maximizing the impact of that communication? Are you using them? Maybe you need them for another department to use that tool. That's where the internal person can say, "Oh, you know, this is going on and it impacts three people. We have this tool, let's use that one for that." It's, it is complicated, and people are, people want things immediately. And that, I think, speaks to what we're talking about, sort of the structural things, is, you know, if you keep everybody in silos, you're not going to be able to achieve that sort of efficient, consistent communication that you want. And I will get back to you about, you know, the inventory. My colleague has seriously been furiously working on this because it's the obvious important question folks want to know. But more and more, I know Amherst, Andover, Lexington, I think maybe Groton have all, it's all been very recent, people are identifying this as a need.
And to your point, that was mentioned, the rec department does an amazing job with social media. I was shocked when I looked at the followers that they have on their Facebook page and all their social media outlets. So, yeah, I think all of our departments are at different levels to kind of get everyone on the same page if we could. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, all I can say is thank you for your time and effort. There's a lot there. This is, if that was the quick version, I don't know what this would be. There's a lot there, but thank you so much for your time and effort that you put into this.
Yeah, and please, you know, as you go through this and, you know, you start to get into the weeds, don't hesitate to reach out to us. We'd be happy to walk you through whatever needs to be walked through.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Nice to finally meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Finally a person.
Okay. Along, I believe we have the 147 approval license to deal precious metals. Is there anybody in the room for that? Is there anybody online for that? Anybody like to speak on it before I say something about this?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, to be fair, I don't think we told the applicant that they needed to be at the meeting. I think they thought it was just a quick renewal of the license.
So my personal opinion is I'd like to see him come in. I think there's a lot there that's, I mean, the application itself, when you read it, everything's actually in there. It's just my opinion. You guys can vote it the way you want. But, I mean, it's something I think that, like, to talk to him about it. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Makes sense, yeah.
If you want to vote it in tonight, we can. If you want to vote it out, we can.
I always prefer to have the applicant here as well.
I think it's fair to have him in to discuss.
Make a motion to postpone this?
You can...
Make a motion for one, what, in a second?
Yeah. I wish we knew that, because we've pushed him down the road. But it is what it is. We'll have him back on if that's our date.
Before we postpone, John, just real quick, this is for our current business, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with whatever the board wants to do.
Okay.
Make a motion postpone.
All those who have a motion to postpone it?
Aye.
Annual committees?
Nope. 148.
Oh, before July parade, sorry. My bad. I'm still a rookie, hey?
Still a rookie?
Still a rookie.
Get out of here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So there's a parade, the parade route in your packet?
Yes.
And we're just looking for the board to formally bless the parade route and vote to officially authorize the street closure. Back for a number of years, so I don't expect there to be much of a fact, but we just need to cross the Ts and dot the Is if you want.
Well, there's too much to discuss about this, so...
I mean, as part of the committee, I'm happy to field questions if anybody has any. Okay. Easy.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the parade route as presented in the backup.
Second.
Motion being second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Zero, zero. Okay. Now we can do committees.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I will abstain from Disabilities Access Commission because I have a family member on it. That's the only one I think that we need to take out of the group, unless somebody else has a stench as well.
I think so. Right, John, I don't have to abstain from anything on committee appointments, right?
Mr. Speaker, is there any comments on this, or...
So there were two lists in your backup. The first list is those of being appointed by the town administrator. The second is those appointed by the select board. So please, the chair, we can do the TA appointments first, and then the chair could entertain a motion for the select board appointments.
Gentlemen, any questions on this? Mr. Spel?
No.
Mr. Priest?
No.
Mr. Takeus already made your statement about...
Actually, that's a town administrator appointment, so I don't have to abstain from it.
So on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, who requests the committee appointments as submitted in your backup, and asks the board to waive their 15-day wait.
So moved.
Second.
So moved the second, and make a motion was made, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against, 4-0-0 in favor. For the second, now we need the second one, right?
Yeah. Motion made by...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve our committee appointments that fall under the purview of the select board.
Okay. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, Mr. Spel, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? 4-0-0 again. Okay. Subcommittee minutes. Approval for that?
Want a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the subcommittee minutes from 6:05 and the design advisor group minutes from January 12th.
Second.
She's made the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was the E W, right? Did you, both of them?
Yep.
Okay. So subcommittee reports, we'll start with Mr. Spel.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The biggest thing that I just want to just remind everybody is that next Tuesday is July 4th, it's the parade. We just voted on the route. Looking forward to walking in it. The forecast looks pretty good, knock on wood, but stays that way. So bring your galoshes just in case.
Galoshes?
Because it's parade or shine. But regardless, you know, keep an eye out for the weather and dress appropriately, whether you're in the parade or watching along the parade route, which goes from the Presbyterian Church on Cambridge Street down to the Marshall Simons Memorial Schools on Went Street. If you have any questions, you can check out the website, but look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight.
Administrator?
No, just feedback on what Nick said, is 4th of July next week. I hope that all of you and everybody watching at home and those in the virtual world, enjoy your holiday and celebrate the nation's birthday and do so in a safe way.
Thank you. Any report over, Ms. Mills? Would you like to report on anything at all?
No.
Is it okay tonight, given there was a new chairman involved? Okay, thank you.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion adjourned, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against? Motion being adjourned.